Not them, we're ready when you are. Will the report sign show up, Josh? In the chime.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, all right, we will call the workshop for the 2024, 2028 fiscal plan projections to order. The mayor will be about fifteen minutes late, so I'll call the immediate order and the mayor will take the chair when he gets here. Immediately, we'll turn it over to our city finance director, Josh Solinger, and let him go through the information.
Thank you, Councilmember Morissette, council members, we're gonna review the fiscal plan for 2024 through 2028. I need to go back several slides. So now we're gonna review the fiscal plan for 2024. So on the agenda, we're just gonna do an introduction, we're gonna revisit some issues identified in the original fiscal plan that goes back to 2011, review some core assumptions in this fiscal plan. We're gonna briefly discuss some of the allocations that form kind of the backbone of transfers in and transfers out that we build all across our budget for all funds. Then get into some macro level forecasts over the next five years. Talk general obligation debt, levy targets, and then we will ultimately open it up to you all to kind of zoom out and ask some more policy related questions as they relate to the plan. And then, and then last, the next steps. So to begin, what is a long range fiscal plan? This is a reminder for you and a reminder for the folks at home that are watching. So it may provide a blueprint for future decisions. So when we talk about the capital budget, the operating budget, the city administrator's work plan, it's all really connected. And so this gives us a way to plan over the next five years. Really, at more of a macro level, we're talking macro targets. So this isn't a budget exercise where we go through the process with you all and we end up with an adopted budget November. This is, this is more high level targets and benchmarks that we forecast out over five years to give you some idea of what future levies, future debt service may look like. And then we can bake that into our budget assumptions. So we also use this as a tool to receive feedback from you all on local revenues such as property tax levies. Since within the state's levy limit formula, we have the, the ability at the local level, you as council to set, to set tax levy. Other things like the streetlight special charge, which has appeared in past fiscal plans and is now implemented. The fiscal plan is the place where we begin to contemplate things like this and build them into our model. Same can be said of things like the vehicle registration fee, which appeared in prior fiscal plans well in advance of it actually being implemented. And then the allocation of our, of our finite tax levy within the state's levy limit restrictions. So then we also use this as a tool to discuss non-levy, or I'm sorry, non-local revenues and impacts to the fiscal plan. So state shared revenues would be one example of a non-local revenue and other intergovernmental revenues such as transportation aid, payment for municipal services, and more. We also estimate future operating costs with an emphasis on personnel and staffing levels because that represents the largest share of our operating budget and operating expenses. And then we also use this as a tool to estimate future debt commitments and in turn how that affects future levies and the allocation of, of the tax levy. So I'm not gonna spend long on this, but you can see kind of the, the conceptual idea of where we're at here. So we're, we're at the top underneath strategic plan, we're talking fiscal plan, which leads into budget preparation. We then execute, and then once we've executed, we have accounting and reporting and auditing that we do, which leads us back to the planning phase. And, and this is really something that's occurring constantly. I know this kind of looks static, it looks like something we're maybe doing once a year or something. But that kind of circular budget, execute, report, account for, and then adjust is, is something that's constantly occurring. And then all around that are all the other plans of the city that we have that influence what's going on there in the middle. So to jump into history for the fiscal plan then, the first plan, which was the 2011 through 2015 fiscal plan, identified several issues. It confirmed financial policies such as fund balance and debt levels. It provided for a way to maintain adequate reserves within the general fund, to maintain or improve debt ratios, such as total, uh, general obligation indebtedness. And then it also addressed revenue concerns such as the future of shared revenues, transportation aids. At the time, the payment and move of tax or pilot impact from the power fleet decommissioning. And so as an update to those, to those issues, the current fund balance policy, which was amended in October of 2021, provides for a minimum fund balance threshold of forty percent. So within the general fund, we want to maintain forty percent unassigned fund balance as a percentage of the next year's budget. But then there's a target of fifty. So anything above that target of fifty percent would be eligible for one-time uses as the council would, would see fit. And then debt levels, the state actually has a state imposed external limit of five percent of equalized value. So that's, for us at least, in our community, that, that number is constantly increasing because the value of the community is constantly increasing and the debt limit is just a five, it's five percent of an increase. But then locally, the city council has adopted a goal aiming for our total general obligation indebtedness to be half of the state limit or two point five percent of our equalized value. So getting into the revenue concerns and when we talk about shared revenues, as I think everybody on council knows at this point, with the passage of Wisconsin Act twelve, the state is providing additional supplemental shared revenue to municipalities across the state. For us here in River Falls, our share of that in 2024 will be five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. The state's already provided some guidance that that'll increase by two point three percent in twenty-five. And then beyond that, it'll just be indexed to sales tax receipts at the state. So it'll be subject to economic, the economic limits, I guess. There is a longer term impact of personal property tax repeal that is, is unknown at this point. And the league of Wisconsin municipalities have been soliciting help from across the state in understanding what it is that the state just did with Act twelve when it comes to personal property tax repeal. Well, now, it would appear that the state's committing to additional state aids to make cities whole for the amount of money that they're going to essentially lose from personal property tax revenue when the repeal goes into effect. How long that state aid lasts at a dollar for dollar amount remains to be determined. In the past, those things tend to kind of erode over time. The transportation aids, the fiscal plan just cont- contemplates these as remaining the same throughout. And which is a significant amount of, of state aid that we received, about six hundred thousand dollars, I believe. So that's not an insignificant number and we just assume it's flat across five years. And then for payment and move taxes, we do include some increases to those pilot payments from anticipated growth in utility infrastructure. And I say pilot, it's all, this is, this is primarily a conversation about man valid. The two utilities that pay those pilots are the electric utility and the water utility. That's actually public service commission requirement that they make those payments to the city in lieu of taxes. So when you add a significant amount of assets to the utility, you're going to increase that, that, that payment amount. So then just to kind of stay on the, the history here for one more slide. Back in 2018, when we were doing the 2018 through 2023 fiscal plan, the 2022 assessed value was assumed at nine hundred and sixty-four million dollars. So this is really just here to illustrate how things can change when we actually get to the point in time that we're talking about in the future. Actual 2022 assessed value was over a billion dollars, one point three five. So again, you can see how much that initial assumption changed. Now, some of that is because of the revaluation that was completed in the community. So that was just a market adjustment of existing properties, that's not all net new construction. But even prior to that revaluation happening, total assessed value was already ahead of what was contemplated in the fiscal plan. So it's fair to say that even without that revaluation having occurred, we were ahead of the forecast for, for growth in the community. And then you can see at the bottom what the tax levy was in the eighteen plan for 2023 and then what it actually ended up being in 2023. So it was actually about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars less in twenty-three compared to what was originally contemplated for that year in 2018. So then we're gonna jump into some projections a little bit. Again, these are just gonna be more macro level targets and assumptions that I've been talking about. So right now, and this is also an opportunity for you all to provide feedback too. If you hear anything that we're saying that we baked into our five year forecast that you wanna throw up the big stop sign for, talk a bit about more, tell us, we're not, you know, perhaps not going aggressive enough and we need to talk about that. This is obviously the opportunity to do so. So for, so for wages on the expense side, we're assuming a three percent cost of living adjustment for each year over five years. For benefits, we're assuming a six percent increase each year over five years. Operations, we're assuming increased by one point five percent. Transfers out that the general fund makes to other funds that they're being charged by, we assume will increase by two percent every year. And then the tax levy, we are building a five year forecast that just allows us to stay under the state's levy limit at this point. But we do, in the model, assume a maximum net increase of four percent. So as we, as we went back and forth and kind of massaging the numbers and adding expenses in and seeing where we were at on the revenue side and, and adjusting, trying to drive towards balanced budgets each year over five years, one thing we kept in mind was not increasing the net tax levy growth from one year to the next by anything more than four percent. So total levy growth may be higher than that, but if you factor in growth that occurs in the community, which in the fiscal plan, you can see right below that, we assume is one point five percent every year. Once you factor that growth in, the net impact would be about four percent. And that's kind of the ceiling we have built into the plan unless we were to hear otherwise from council, which is one of the questions we'll get back to. So for shared revenue, or I, I guess I should linger on that net new construction. So in the past, our model assumed one percent net new construction. That, in hindsight, was an awfully conservative assumption to make. And when we look at the ten year history of net new construction, we thought now is the time to increase that to one point five based on what has occurred, what is currently occurring and what we think may continue to occur over the next several years. And that's obviously something we can come back and revisit. But we thought now, now is probably the time to adjust that particular assumption to be more in line with what's, what's been occurring. So for shared revenue, again, there's five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars that the city will receive from the state in 2024. We've been provided guidance already that that increases by two point three percent in twenty-five. And then in our model, we have a zero percent, um, zero percent growth in 2026 and beyond. So because it's indexed to sales tax revenues and we have done a, a little bit twenty year dive into what sales tax revenues in the state look like, on average, those have increased in Wisconsin by somewhere between two and three percent. But again, this is something that's new. We thought we would just bake, you know, maximum, a maximum conservative approach into the model on the revenue side for this. And then it's something we can always, of course, revisit in a future year.
Yeah, I have a question. We straightened out interfund loan policy this last year. And my question is, when we look at a five year projection, is that interfund loan policy targeting the interest to bring it down? So when we do like bonding site at the council, we're looking at doing that, that it would pay it off as soon as it can, is that part of that?
So a couple, a couple things there. So in, in this particular chart, this interest is referring to the, the interest earnings that we have on our cash at, at the bank. So that's a, that, I should have actually added whether I'm talking about expense or revenue assumption here. In this case, it's revenue on cash we have at the local government investment pool or at security financial bank. But to your, your question about interest on interfund loans, we did, and I, and I will actually talk a little bit more about that too in the presentation. But we did go tid by tid, myself, our financial analyst Christine, and then Carrie, economic development manager. We did sit down and review the performance of our TIDS to date, where we think they're gonna be going. And kind of one of the things, and when I worked with Scott, that, you know, as you're getting into more of the art versus the science of these sorts of things, it becomes questions of, well, how aggressive do we wanna make our assumptions about growth, future growth in TIDS that have available land? You know, we ran through a scenario where we kind of dialed up the aggressiveness. We said, what happens if all this growth happened within the next two years, what does that look like? And then we dialed it back and we said, what happens if nothing occurs? And then we, you kind of land somewhere in between in terms of what we think will be reasonable for those TIDS. And based on those exercises we went through is essentially how we adjusted how much interest on interfund loans we think TIDS will be able to repay to the general fund over five years, as well as the principal portion. And essentially, yes, if a TID is in a position to be able to repay, then we want it to start repaying consistently. It wouldn't necessarily be a, let's, let's grab some money here and then wait, grab some money here. We, we wanna take care of project costs, we wanna take care of any external debt service we have, any external, you know, guarantees that we've made to developers and development agreements. And then if all that's satisfied and we feel good about the trajectory of the TID in terms of cash, we'd like to then bake in that we're gonna start consistently repaying these.
So it's fair to say the assumption that we will use it to pay down our interest as soon as we can when it comes to bottoms true. Sounds like it.
Bonding or inter-
So are you asking the question, are you using bonding and interfund interchangeably? It's kind of both, I guess, is what I'm talking about. So because what we're doing, based on that interfund policy, is we're, we are prioritizing the bonds first. So external, the external obligations we have get paid first and the interfund transfers are paid then after that. So I just wanna be clear.
So the agmar- agmarization would be targeted after that?
Yeah, and we're prioritizing that. And then the last in line, additional project costs or pro- so an example would be like street lighting in Sterling Ponds Corporate Park. So we, you know, we went through all the assumptions about the growth on the lots that are left. Then we dialed it back and said, well, let's assume three of those lots are just vacant. And in the next five years, we get nothing that develops. How aggressive can we be? You know, we, we have enough cash flow for the debt service, then how aggressive can we be on the interfund? So can we do twenty-five thousand a year, fifty thousand a year, seventy-five thousand a year? Then we did that across all, you know, seventeen TIDS. And so that's when you get these, the six eighty-six, the six twenty-eight. That's the role of, of some conservative assumptions, primarily based on the existing development that already is in the ground in TIDS. But it's not only, so in the past, fiscal plans have only been based on what's already built. This fiscal plan, I'd say we did a nudge, not really a leap, to say, all right, again, back to Sterling Ponds, we're not gonna assume all those lots are gonna be filled. But we have an executed development agreement with, I can't remember the name of the LLC. He submitted building permit request, he submitted the site. It, it, it's rolling forward. So I think I didn't, we didn't assume all of it. I still took, if it was eleven million dollar project, we assumed seven million. To get, to still be on the conservative side. And then that seven million dollar project is what is allowing us to make the assumptions about the advanced repayment.
Okay, I think you answered my question because I was asking about a comprehensive approach, I think that's what you described.
It's twenty-seven lake spreadsheets. I mean, it's, we're trying to circle and look for circular errors every time we can in our assumptions. So I would say, but what Josh is pointing out is where we've changed some of the assumptions from what you have seen before. So TID transfers, I would say we're a little bit less conservative in projecting the five year window. Remember, we're not projecting on ten or fifteen years, we're just kind of looking at that five year window. We do have the full life of the TID projections, but we're, we're trying to take a conservative approach on this five year window, but less conservative than the past because we've, we have heard, I think fairly consistency from, consistently from the council that if we're gonna have all this growth in development, we should start to have, you know, we want to help do those advances to the general fund. To date, the, the general fund repayment was primarily accounting at the end of the life of the TID. So that's where we had the kind of a windfall from the TID fourth original whitetail the general fund had loaned way back when. And that was the impetus for your, your interfund policy changes. We're grabbing every policy and sheet we can find and feeding it into the assumptions.
And you include how many dollars or percentage that you're figuring? That's not dug or starting to build, but that we have a, a good feeling for and, you know, you, so you use-
But it's pretty conservative. I mean, I, a, a good feeling would not be good enough to, to assume it as a revenue. We would have to be fairly advanced in our discussions with a developer or have some kind of approved development agreement. And even the, in the case where we had approved development agreement, we're not assuming a group percent of revenue because I just think we should, you know, back at this in two years, we can make an adjustment then if, if phase two goes in or whatever. And then we didn't include like all of the, we have two developers agreements in the plan. The River Falls Industrial Park, the original. We didn't, I don't think we included, I know we didn't include all of them, even though we have two developers, developers agreement. We just kind of bareback what we assume. But then we set targets. So then Carrie gets a goal sheet, says, hey, fiscal plan counts on this, but here's what the target is for, for revenue growth. So we only assumed two lots would be sold, but you go out and sell three.
So when, Scott, when in your mind do you start counting that from your ground dug or when there's structure being put up or do you, when do you look at it?
We did not count first time developers, even if we had a developers agreement. In the case of Flynn, that's an advanced developer with, working with Ryan companies that builds, building after building. We have a high level competence that what was agreed to and has already received the financing approval and is gonna be built by. So then we have, we assume the whole phase one. So his, his first initial building that he's seeking a building permit right now, even though he doesn't have a building permit yet. But in the case of the projects that we have in the industrial, the original industrial park, those are both first time develop. They're owner operator. And I just think they have a lot higher chance of not happening or being delayed significantly. A lot of times, yeah, they wanna hurry up and then it's wait, hurry up and wait.
So neither one of those are factored in this at all?
They're not. So if the council wanted to dial up, that would most certainly give you more revenue to spend on priorities of the city. You know, if you, if you dial in just a few more projects, you have more revenue. The challenge is if you assume that as an operating support and the projects don't come, you have a cliff that you have to run backwards from. And another strategy we've heard from the council is you'd rather dial up than dial back. So you'd rather realize the revenue and be able to add a police officer rather than add the police officer, assuming the revenue. If the revenue doesn't come in, then go back and do layoffs or change prioritizations. But that's, that's a total policy decision of the council. And these really are dials and levers you can, you can pull. So as you get requests from the community for, you know, what they think we need beyond what's included in the fiscal plan, which always occurs, you, you can decide as a policy decision, well, we're gonna count two percent that new construction. And then you'll have X hundred thousand dollars of revenue. I caution you though, like never before, we're running into the levy limit nonsense. So even if you wanna spend a whole bunch more money, at some point, I just cannot recommend that you do another workaround for the levy because if we can't get a change in the levy limit formula, it'll, it'll put us in trouble in twenty thirty-one. And I don't, with that, with our, with our outlook, we don't wanna get a future council in, in a spot where they just have no choices but like scorched earth and you start peeling back because of the levy limit. And we're not there yet, but it's certainly a possibility. So even on that four percent maximum net increase, I'd like to tell you that there's some magic formula we used. It was kind of knowing what was gonna result in levy limit worksheet, you know, which is tied into all of this. It's like you can push that to five or six percent in twenty-four and twenty-five. I have no, no doubt we can do that, especially with the shared supplemental shared revenue coming in. But it will be very challenging to deal with in twenty-six, maybe not twenty-six, but at point twenty-seven. And so trying to maintain your, we would rather celebrate revenue beyond our projections than have another workshop on what is the head of the year. The, the economy can always change this too. So there's, this is assuming a fairly well-operating economy for the entire five years. If, if there's an economic down, significant economic downturn, then we're gonna be back here talking about the assumptions because that, this would be more sunshiny than a, than if we had a recession, a huge recession or some kind of changes. Or inflation doesn't stay mostly under control. These assumptions won't, won't pay for cost escalations and materials that we use every day. If they go up twelve, thirteen, fourteen percent a year, this, this fiscal plan isn't gonna address it.
So Scott, what if we, what if we got three plans with the only variable being that new construction, two percent, one and a half, and half, and one? So that we had some eyes on?
Yeah, we can do it. I would say in order to provide you timely and quality assured data, we would want limited to two options.
Okay.
Because by the time we go through and check all the cells and make sure everything, I mean, you could do some macro assumptions like that.
Well, that's, that's really more what I think.
Give you a whole bunch of detail. And the other problem is that these are all related. In particular, that levy limit is a real challenge because, for example, the bond sale today came in at a better rate.
Right.
Hooray, that just lowered our levy limit. Because levy limit is, is directly connected to the amount of debt service you're gonna issue. And so since the debt service came in at a lower, we're gonna pay out less than we thought we were gonna pay out. That lowers your levy limit. So it's, you can't just take the money savings that you saved and spend it. It, you're automatically getting a clampdown from the state. So it's, it's hard, the scenario is, unfortunately, it's not like a P and L you know, where you can just run twenty P and L's together and see what happens because you essentially have the corporate overlord saying, no matter what you think is fiscally smart, here's an arbitrary worksheet you need to fill out. So we could, but we could do some range, the answer is yes. Or we could just give you a lump sum amount. The, everything is, you know, there's transparency in all these spreadsheets. Are we not sure if the council wants them all or do you want us to publish them to the website or what you do is? The, the spreadsheets are not proprietary.
So is it, might be limited around the table?
It is almost untouchable.
Really?
Despite the, the kind of nonsense that it causes with fiscal. Again, right now, the incentive, there's a disincentive I've been paying off. As you've seen me before, I try to aggressively pay off debt. There's a huge disincentive to do that. If you do that, you just lower your levy. So essentially, you pay off the debt, you can't use any of the debt savings for, so to use for operating.
Well, unfortunately, we've-
You could do a referendum, I don't, there, there's never a no, you never do it. There's always a way to do it. You, you, if the council said, this is how much we need to spend, you can do a referendum. You can do a referendum. That's always an option. It's. Surprisingly common in the last couple of years in Wisconsin, but. It's usually only successful if you can tie it to a specific initiative. So if you want to build a fire station, you probably could log and raise the levy limit by a certain amount. In order to pay the debt service of the fire station. And you'd have. I, we haven't surveyed the community, so I don't, I mean, I can't speak for them, but you'd have a higher chance of just saying, well, we need another one percent levy increase for overall operations. You know. Police officers have been somewhat successful. As you saw, the share, the public safety requirement in the county did not pass. St. Pierre County did that and was not successful. So I don't know what the appetite is. But that's not, we didn't put that on there. We're, I guess the assumption is. We're not exceeding the levy limit. We're not, we are not considering the option of being able to go to referendum. We're trying to work within that parameter, however. Irrational, it seems.
I had it down in my notes too, as well as what Scott talked about, but could we? Get something put together or just one and a half versus two or um percent for increase in the. Um, that new construction that be curious to see what had happened.
Yes. Would just.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Just very high level. Um, we will be in the realm of tens of thousands of dollars per year. That's about, that's about it. One percent on eight million dollar levy is eighty thousand. So you're. But it's the base that. So it's the base and that is less than that.
Okay, it's probably not even worth.
I mean, you fit away percentages and those are great, but. You could do actual dollars. It's, it's more helpful.
It might be worth it, but I don't want to rule out that. Because again, seventy or eighty thousand is having more significance in our. Operating side than it has in the past, because it's just you're running against that levy limit. If you could squeeze out another forty or fifty thousand in levy limit. You you're not raising taxes by even a percent, you know, it's a fractional of one percent. Which you all get to decide what intolerance you have for tax increases. We could also run this whole model with a zero percent. But I can tell you that that will. Result in even stiffer headcount reductions than what are assumed. Because we're only assuming not one FTE over the five years. And that actually is assuming a reduction of FTE in the short term. And then a build back of, so we're going to probably reduce. So three or four FTE, one, one sixteen, eight, so three. Yeah, three FTE in twenty four and then we've got another one in twenty six.
Yep. And those are retirements.
Yeah, we hope to do it through attrition. I mean, that's the plan, but you know, you, we're not gonna. If we make the assumption, then we'll have to, we'll have to work with the plan. But generally speaking, it's part of our long term force planning. We built up things like H R I T. You all remember those discussions because we wanted to get to a certain level. Now we were able with efficiencies and the fact that we've. Things and the fact that we expect there to be some retirements or resignations over time. Yes, generally speaking, we're, we'll be. Pulling those positions back and then over the five years, we think we can sell. Those plus one. But you'll only end up in five years with one more person total. Um, or it might be one person, it might be, I mean, it might be three people if they're. Art winners or whatever, but one FTE, one. That's in the final year. So that the build back occurs over the entire plan. We don't get that plus one till twenty eight.
Right. So you have your drop and then.
The pressures of inflation are real, right? And wage pressure, you know, you've, you have all supported us trying to pay who we have. Market rates or as close to market as possible, but that means there might be less of us getting paid at market than more of us being paid under market. Which is the model I think is more likely to succeed in the long term for us. So, um, just a, just a few more core assumptions. And and I know there's only three things here, but these all probably beg a little bit more discussion than it would indicate. We. We have made an adjustment to how we're financing fire station design. So because of that supplemental shared revenue. One of the things that we wanted to make sure was built in the fiscal plan was an assumption that we are, we are not increasing service levels. Or expanding FTEs obviously as a result of the new supplemental shared revenue. And because of the way that the statute was written for how you can use that supplemental shared revenue, it's not. You, you do have a fair amount of discretion, but it's also not wide open. So one of the things that you're able to use it on is public safety. So. With a fairly significant amount of money that wasn't originally contemplated for twenty twenty four, we thought, well. Let's. Finance the fire station design with cash. Twenty twenty four. And then for the fires and then for the police roof to jump down to more in twenty twenty five. Because again, with ongoing supplemental shared revenue. Um, in more of a gradual ramp up of our inflationary factors on the expense side. We'd still have sufficient cash balance remaining revenues over expenses in twenty twenty five to also cash finance. Police roof. Now, because this would have otherwise been tax levy backed borrowing. This won't actually penalize us from a levy limit perspective. The levy, uh. The general obligation debt that we're utilizing for levy limit purposes would be revenue backed borrowing. So the fact that it was already going to need to be levy backed borrowing, this is just a reduction of future debt service that. For our ability to make our whole formula work under the state's levy limit formula, these won't actually impact us. It's, it's a bit of a silly game that we play, but these are two opportunities we identified. And are consistent with how the state says you're allowed to use supplemental shared revenue. So in this case, we were seeking to spend cash to reduce the debt ser- future debt service. Because it's the type of debt service the state doesn't count against you. So we, this was a specific strategy to. Make more room in twenty six, twenty seven and twenty eight, because we won't have to be paying. A proportion of the nine hundred thousand. It probably would have been ten year note or a year note. And so. This is good. According to the state, this is good, that reduction. But paying less on our bonds that are revenue back. It's good debt reduction. You still can't argue with that. It's a good thing. You just can't gather any, can't generate any more levy. So you'd have to also reduce your operating expenses by that amount. Which the policy is in, you can make, but it would definitely have service levering impact. Well, those are the levers we pull. So we look in the future, okay, what did we just do here by not taking on that debt service in twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight? We had this kind of. Now, I don't want to call it arbitrary, even four percent net levy growth was kind of our target we were working with. We just reduced future expenses. Operation increased, we assumed at one point at two percent, then we assumed it at one and a quarter, one point six, and you just kind of start to pull these levers with. Well, we just eliminated some future debt service. Levy went down, but maybe now we can bump our operations to one five, which is still. Maybe challenging to keep pace with inflation in the future, but it was, it was a mechanism to get some levy from debt service. To operations by just paying in cash now for these planned projects. And then fire station construction. Was originally approved in the twenty four, twenty eight C I P as a nine million dollar project. And so. Going back to the C I P, that was part of the conversation. It's a fairly iterative process of. Set your big capital costs. Let's look at the fiscal plan and see how it all shakes out as we transition into operations. And then you kind of start to move the pieces around a bit to build the whole puzzle. So this is an example where. For capital planning purposes, we assumed a nine million dollar project with one point four million in federal funding. We still have the one point four million in federal funding, but now we have a five point five million dollar construction with a four point one million dollar borrow. Instead of what before was, I believe, in total with design, it was going to be a seven point six million dollar borrow. It's now. Because we're cash financing design, we've reduced construction. A uh, four point one million dollar borrow. So. I did just want to touch on allocations, um, because these also are another lever when we look at. The fiscal plan and when we think about even our other funds such as our utilities, our internal service funds. We've got a lot of transfers in and out happening across our funds and those are all levers we're trying to pull and understand as we pull them. As well. So, um, I just wanted to mention current methodologies for the four. So these are two allocations that represent revenues to the general fund. These are allocations out to other funds. And then the next two are going to be allocations that are expenses to the general fund. They're paying out to other funds. So. There is a general fund allocation, uh, proportions of budgeted services for mayor council, administration and finance, city clerk and communications. And they're allocated out to other funds of the city based on the portion of the total city budget that those funds represent. So that was. When the methodology was originally contemplated, was, you know, devised as a way to. Try to represent some amount of time being spent on those funds by, by city staff. Um, by administrative staff. So the electric utility actually receives the largest amount of allocation of the funds at eighteen percent, and then you can see the rest there. If we move down to H R, that's a portion of budgeted H R services that are allocated out to other funds. Now, in this case, it's based on the number of employees. Not FTEs in this case, but what we would call just EEs for short, or basically your full time, your part time, your temporary staff. That's obviously going to be something that's getting revisited periodically, because those numbers are in flux, as we just talked about with the general fund. And the five year fiscal plan and assumptions about headcount and such. So these are things that get revisited periodically. Um, and with a biennial budget, they're getting revisited roughly every couple of years. But in this case, you can see what the share of those funds are. So when you're looking at the general fund allocation. And electric was eighteen percent of the allocation. They're still the highest with fourteen percent of the H R allocation, but now you can see libraries moved up, sewers moved down, water shifted down. And I T receives some of the H R allocation as well. So these are, again, these are funds being charged by the general fund for support provided by admin staff that represents revenue to the general fund. And that's one of the levers we look at in our assumptions of the fiscal plan. Now, these are allocations that the general fund is making out to other funds, that the general fund pays. So there's a maintenance allocation, which is portions of budgeted services for for maintenance. So we have a separate. Maintenance internal service fund. That charges out across the city and these are allocated out to other funds of the city based on the amount of square footage of each building. So you can see, these are, these are also going to be assumptions that get revisited periodically. They're probably not getting adjusted as periodically as something like the H R one might be, might be because you're likely making adjustments to your. Your employee count more frequently than you are the square footage of the buildings. But in this case, the general fund receives forty two percent of that allocation, followed by electric fund at eighteen percent, library fifteen. See the, see the rest there. And then last is the city hall allocation. So that's just within the building. There's a certain amount of square footage of the building occupied by different. Departments and funds of the city. Um, and you can see what the allocation for that is. So the general fund receives sixty four percent of the city hall funds allocation. Followed by utilities and then information technology.
Josh, could you go? Slide. So when we say H R allocation, and I'm, I'm just going to shoot right to library right away. We're saying they're twelve percent of the employee base of the city staff for River Falls.
So that would be, yeah, that was, um. I believe it was sixteen was the, and again, keeping in mind these things get adjusted. But at this point with the biennial budget, it was sixteen people. So not FTEs.
Yeah, right. Sixteen total people. And that's twelve percent of the city employees.
Yeah, and I'd have to, I'd have to run the numbers real quick to see what that represents. Our FTE is about a hundred and twenty, but our headcount is. So that makes sense. Twelve some, twelve, sixteen and twelve of a hundred and fifty.
You know, it'd be. Twelve percent. If it's a hundred and fifty.
And that, the headcount. Allocation there instead of F T was based on the fact that you're. Helping more employees with their benefits with counseling. Recruitments. You don't, you don't necessarily have. A full time employee is not necessarily more work, more or less work than. But you, again, you can, there's all kinds of ways to do H R allocations.
But we're doing it per employee, not full timer, just more employees.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, the H R department's not logging, okay, a police employee walked in today. This is how much time I spent with them. And it's the same with our general, we do general advertising, work on trying to promote the city for, for jobs. That's what's being allocated, you know, who's paying for those. Facebook ads or other things that we'd be doing.
So when looking at this H R allocation. Would there be a bunch of things that tune one to get to a hundred or am I thinking that wrong?
These, so this, this was a kind of a selection of the larger allocation. So there are a number of allocations kind of below the bottom line on each of these that are just point five, point three, point two.
Yeah, the general fund, the general fund.
Really? Yeah, your loving. Because you have police, fire, all those others that are not parks.
Yeah, I was trying to understand the other fifty nine that are not percentage wise counted there. And you're saying, well, that's going to be back up in general.
Basically sixty forty is that split for general fund, non general fund. Sorry, I misunderstood you.
No, that's okay. I think it's the opposite for general fund now, right?
It's that we're allocating. Now, back to the first slide there. So forty nine. Thirty nine, forty six. Wow. So it's about forty, so fifty five percent. So is, is retained by the general. And, and these, some of these allocations we, at the very beginning. I think if who was here, we first started talking about these in fiscal plan eight years ago or nine, ten years ago. There's some question about whether you want to do the allocations without, and what we heard resulting is yes, we should try to account for. The cost where it is. And remember ambulance used to be on all these charts. And so then we had a good number when the ambulance. We were deciding if we're going to do the ambulance contract. Then we had a number to say, all right, that's what we need to think about for reductions in costs. Because we don't have that, we're not providing that service anymore. So if the electric utility, if you decided to create a wholly owned subsidiary electric utility. You would know kind of what we think is the impact on these different services. Not with military precision, but with fiscal strategy precision.
So there, there's a lot of employees that are under the H R allocation. That are not listed there then, right? What did we say? Fifty ninety percent or is general or?
Yeah, for H R you've got twenty six, you've got thirty six, forty one percent. So you got. Yeah, about sixty employees or whatever that are paid, paid straight out of the general fund.
Yeah, so ninety, ninety employees.
Yeah, if you didn't, I mean, if you, there's no question, you wouldn't have the. Systems and apparatus and staffing that you have if you were just running. Elections, right? In a council meeting every, every two times a month, right? You're. You have the finance and H R and admin because you're running. Multi million dollar utilities.
Scott, is it possible you could get us a spreadsheet and allocations for those other ones?
Improvise. I think as part of the library discussions, we're going to try to create like a one pager for each allocation that says, here's the methodology. Here's the last time it was adjusted. Including F T E square foot, whatever the calculation is to. The department heads are highly.
The department heads are highly sensitive about allocations and always check Josh's man.
Lots of conversations.
The police team doesn't wanna pay for five more square foot than what should. Now, the police is a case where they're in the general fund, right, so there's kind of a group working together as a general fund saying. Well, you're not, you know, Kevin kinda gets swallowed up by, hey, you're the non-general fund guy, shouldn't you be paying a little bit more? So there's back and forth, there's lots of discussion about, oh, we can do this final. Final allocations.
I think like Scott said, there are, there are truly a number of methodologies for things like this. We're not alone in having internal service funds that do allocations and, and. The methodologies you'll see are across the board, it really becomes a question of like Scott says. We're kind of at more of the fiscal strategy level of developing our methodology because it eventually becomes a question of. How many dollars do you wanna spend to track a dollar kind of a question, so. We're kind of thinking about it strategically, equitably. But like he said, it's not necessarily military precision, as we're, we're trying to accomplish other, other work as well.
Yeah, it's not worth a ten thousand dollar analysis to, to move five hundred dollars from one fund to the other. So.
So this kind of gets back to the question earlier about kids and, and interfund loans, so. Uh, several kids are anticipated to make repayments on the principal portion of interfund loans. Now, this isn't treated as operating revenue, so the interest portion of your interfund loan repayments, that's operating revenue, your principal's not. Nevertheless, this has a positive impact on, impact on the general fund's fund balance. And it'll actually move a portion of the general fund's non-spendable fund balance, because that's money that's, it's an asset of the general fund, but it's been loaned out. So the cash isn't available to spend, it's non-spendable, but as it gets repaid, it reduces the amount of non-spendable fund balance. Increases the amount of unassigned spendable fund balance, so I'm gonna show you a fund balance chart, we actually see this in a slider too. But I wanted to show you the T I D six, nine, ten and twelve, where we've planned for these kids to be able to make. Repayments on the principal portion of their interfund loans and as Scott indicated earlier, this was the exercise of how aggressive. Dialed up, dial it back, somewhere in the middle, um, or even more toward conservative still. With our T I Ds and development assumption and how much we believe they'll be able to pay back to the general fund over the next five years. Um, so before I get to the fund balance slide though, I did wanna just show you. Right now in the fiscal plan, this is the annual change as a percent in planned general fund expenses, so you see a large increase in twenty twenty-four. That's because we'll be getting the five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of your supplemental shared revenue, so that's gonna drive up the budget. But then you see it, and again, because these are presented as, as percent changes, it drops back down to be more flat in twenty twenty-five. Because the, kind of the waves come and now the waves moved through and now we're at this kind of new, new normal, new amount. Um, and then with relatively small changes in twenty twenty-six, because. In twenty-four and twenty-five, we'll have these cash financing of capital costs I mentioned earlier. Um, so then once those, once those are, um, through. We're not gonna see a necessarily a large increase in twenty-six, either we keep it relatively flat. Um, and then I mentioned it's for fire station design in twenty-four and then, uh, public or the police roof construction then as well, twenty-five.
So your zero percent on there is a baseline that you're building everything up to for your percent increases. So in twenty twenty-one, which doesn't show there, you're saying you have a one percent increase from twenty twenty-one. To twenty twenty-two.
Actual expenses.
And then from twenty-two to twenty-three, you're saying it went down a half a percent.
Yeah, and that'll be because of the attrition that we have, um, within our workforce right now. So we do have open positions that we're not paying out through payroll, so that's kind of an estimated projected on the end of this year. Decrease in, in percent change, and again, it jumps the way it does in twenty-four because we'll have five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars coming in from the state. We haven't previously had, so that.
But that's six, six percent is based off of the twenty twenty-three number.
Correct, you have twenty, twenty-three estimated to twenty-four budgeted.
We can do a bar too if you want, if you want a historical bar chart, so it was easier to see the actual values.
It's easier for me to see that. Percentages or.
Okay, um, and. I've seen this one way and hearing something different, so I just wanna make sure I understand this. In twenty twenty-four, we're receiving a new part of the shared revenue program. So that means the amount of money we're getting from the state, which I think you just said was five hundred and thirty-four dollars is, was an unexpected bump. Okay, does that mean then, because what it's saying on the top is annual change in general fund expenses? So are we then, have we already accounted for that five hundred and thirty-four and we're spending it already?
So we'll be using, the plan is to use that, that money to cash finance, um, design of the fire station.
Oh, I missed that part, okay.
So, so yeah, you'll see the big bump, but then once the bump happens, then we're kind of at this new level. So you'll see it drops back to more of a one percent change from this kind of new base and.
Probably to point out here, in some of these slides, we're not trying to confuse any of all you, but some of these slides we're talking about. The levy, the total amount of levy, this slide is general fund only.
Yeah.
So, which is just gen, which tends to be the fund a lot of people pay attention to because they. There is a misconception in Wisconsin, especially that the general, whatever the general fund does, that's where your taxes go, but. As you all know, we have a, we have a wide variety of revenues. We just bring this back because we know that's something councils have always wanted to see, right, it's police, it's parks, it's public works. It's the, uh, the non. The ones that we aren't really getting charges for services or any major intergovernmental like revenues. And it does have some kind of a yo-yo effect on everything else, I mean, we spend a lot more in the general fund. There just is less because the overall levy cap is kind of firm. And what we have done in the past, but it's been a while, you know, there was times when we were trying to spend more money in other areas. Well, that one kind of brought the general fund down, we didn't. You know, we had vacant positions or things that we kind of leave them open and build up. Just, this is general fund only, which is why.
None of that's going down, I mean, when you go from twenty-four to twenty-six. That's a one percent bump from what you already had, now new in twenty-four.
The closest to see the flat is from twenty-two actual, it's what we think we'll spend in twenty-three. We think we're gonna spend about the same in twenty-three as we did in twenty-two, but it's still slightly above zero percent.
But everyone is a growth.
Every other year we're planning. What we, what I think we've heard from the council is. You want to endeavor to maintain the level of service that we have as best as we can. Despite inflationary and other pressures. You're not willing, sky's not the limit for tax increases, but. The general tendency here is you think the citizens would rather us try to maintain a core of services. Rather than, we aren't, we aren't really adding much through this fiscal plan. We may be reducing services in some areas in order to enhance services in areas that you've identified as priorities. Um, but overall, the, the basket of services people are gonna get it. They almost, you have to get increase almost to do, well, my opinion is at this point where the inflationary pressures. You have to get an increase in taxes just to maintain and you still might not be able to maintain, we have several of our service lines. We're not even anticipating being able to maintain the same level of service with the same level of revenue because it's just, that's not working that way.
That's where it'll be.
Yeah, but we're not, we didn't, we haven't heard anybody saying, well, just spend seven, eight, nine percent increases. Don't let there be any drop-off, don't make any prioritizations on service levels, we're, you know, that's not what this fiscal plan is, is suggesting. It will further your priorities. But it's, we are reducing the H R, I T, finance and admin. Pretty significantly in the fiscal plan. So I mean, any bill backs will be indirect line services, so it'd be something like a police officer, public works maintenance employee. That was intentional, that was part of our workforce planning, right, we thought that was the area that we. Staffed up and ready to go for the next, you know, the next ten years or whatever, modernize our systems, get those people in place. But then through attrition, we're able to reduce those staffing levels and then we're gonna focus on. Based on what we've heard from you, we're likely to recommend public safety and public works broadly, including parks. Cause that's where lay miles are up, foster services are up. You know, coverage areas up, so those are where some of those things are. And we're automating, trying to automate H R, I T, admin. So that we can finance, bill paying, all that stuff, we're trying to get way more efficient so that we can bring. There's a limit to the efficiency you can gain. We're not willing to give up until we squeeze it a little bit more.
So this really isn't new information, um, as I mentioned, it's, it's the goal. In the model right now is for a maximum net levy increase of four percent, so you can see what that looks like year by year. You can see the total levy represented in orange, but then when you factor in the, the growth in the community. And the impact on that, that new construction, um, that would actually bring that net levy increase down. So that's, that's what's baked into the, the fiscal plan right now. And this is our, this is our projected fund balance for the general fund over the next five years. So the red dashed line represents the forty percent minimum goal. And then fifty percent of course is the, uh, kind of the, the target and anything above fifty percent then would be eligible for one-time use. Now, what I mentioned earlier is that we're shifting because of the T I Ds making payments on their interfund loans. We're seeing more of the fund balance shift away from non-spendable and into unassigned fund balance. And that's represented in the, in the blue, cause it's getting in the background, it's kind of the orange stacked over the blue. And you see the orange getting smaller as time goes and the blue is increasing. The blue increasing is where you see the, the unassigned fund balance, so we started a little less than six million dollars, twenty twenty-two actual, it's five point nine. And we're almost to eight million dollars by twenty twenty-eight, and that's just because those principal payments from the T I Ds as they come in. We're not treating those as operating revenue, so we're not saying we're gonna take that cash, bake it into operations for, for operating expenses. That would essentially just be putting the, putting the general fund's fund balance back to where it would be had it not made the loans out to the T I Ds in the first place. And then because we do treat those as more one-time revenues, um, you know, that would be something that could conceivably be available to loan back out to other funds in the future. To further spur economic development or something like that down the road. The one thing I do wanna call out is that if you look at the table at the bottom, it's cumulative fund balance over or under the minimum in the goal. So in every, in every year, twenty-two actual, twenty-three estimated and on. At the bottom there, you can see that we'll be well above that forty percent minimum. The fifty percent goal, um, we're not there in twenty-two, we still don't think we'll quite be there in twenty twenty-three. But then in twenty-four and beyond, we do estimate that we'll actually begin to exceed that fifty percent goal. However, you know, so this would be the point in time where we would maybe pull this into council, what, what are some? What are some one-time uses that you would want for unassigned fund balance above the fifty percent target? The, the reason I don't think we're necessarily having that conversation with you very enthusiastically is because you can see that although we peaked in twenty twenty-five. It kind of starts to taper back off again, these are forecasts, projections, we'll see what happens as time goes. But if you were to, you know, keep trending that out for the next decade beyond twenty-eight. You know. We may not necessarily be above the fifty percent target anymore, so we're not necessarily saying, you wanna go spend eight hundred thousand dollars of that in twenty twenty-five. Because that's how far above the target we are, because if you do that, we'll fall right back under that then in twenty-six. We're gonna be drawing it down anyways.
And we didn't bake it into the cake, but if you wanted to, what we think is available is a hundred and five thousand. Per year, we're. One time.
Right now?
Because. If you, if you decided you wanted to only keep the fifty percent fund balance, you could spend a hundred and five of the six hundred. And still end up at zero here at, at the line, and so if you're looking for a recommendation for us, like, well, how much? You know, this return to people's money thing that you've seen at the state and federal level. You know, how much fund balance is too much fund balance, well, G F O says there's not such a thing, right? And just have as much cash as you can for a rainy day, the policy you set, which I think is, is. Aggressive and conservative is, we'd like to have fifty percent, well, you're gonna be over that. Well, if we take all these projections through twenty twenty-eight, you've still got a hundred thousand dollars that I think Josh and I would agree you can. You can spend, we would not like to see the number in twenty twenty-eight below zero. But again, that's a policy decision, you could also decide that you'd rather use the forty percent minimum. Then, then you, you don't really have. You, you can change what you're doing, but again, it's, if you spend it right away, you may want to have it for later, so you'd have to think about it. But obviously, there's a huge difference in your amount of money that would be, um, potentially available for you to spend.
And when we got our bonding, our, our, um, rating, was that conversation brought up? Cause I know we were curious as to where, where would we affect our bonding, our rating? If we went below from a percentage standpoint, is forty percent the minimum? Is fifty percent the minimum, uh, do we, we can't. Seem to gain any more bond rating increase because of our size and some different things. But where, where would it negatively impact us? And I don't know that I ever heard a really good answer.
I, I, it's because the, the rating.
They give you one, yeah.
But I think what, what we understand is that we could reach for. The, the triple A only if we have fifty percent, but it's still gonna be a reach, like you said.
Right.
When they look at the overall size, population, you know. Economic makeup of the community, et cetera, and they're gonna say, and they have a fifty percent fund balance policy, we might be able to push them to triple A. I don't think we got any impression that if we were satisfied with a double A rating. Like, that going to forty percent over time would be a problem. If you though said, if this city council said, well, we're satisfied with forty percent, let's spend it all in twenty-four. Red, red sirens go off at Moody's and standards of pork, cause they're gonna be like, well, we're okay with forty, but we're kind of worried that. There's, there's this big spending in one year, so. Um, I think. From a policy perspective, we could not say that going to forty percent would reduce your bond rating, I think we could maintain the double A.
Over time.
But we, but we would highly advise you not to just, if you decided you were gonna go there, you should do it over time because. When they look at the financials and they see some big cash infusion coming and it essentially directly reduce the blue. They would be like, oh, that's, that's a little concerning that your council wanted to spend that money so quickly. So they really want us to have fifty, but they can't come up with a good reason to tell us we have to keep fifty. And they probably would use a one-time spend event as they, they would probably note that in our rating. They would probably say, they maintain the forty percent, however, you know, what could affect the rating in the future is if they don't start filling that back. Over time.
I just wanna caution us all to not come up with some, you know. Butter, partner, some other silly.
I mean, I know there's some, but I mean, is it a big deal? Uh, it would be probably with the amount of borrowing we have out there, a pretty significant amount. I mean, it would, that would not be the tens of ten thousand dollar impact, it would be. Probably a hundred, hundred thousand or more a year savings to get to triple A. But I guess that's really off the cuff, if you want, we can calculate that.
So to me, it doesn't sound like it's worth the risk. It, to try and get there.
It isn't under our current construct, but there are hardly any cities around us that are even close. So if you're sitting in New Richmond council and you're talking about a twelve percent fund balance. Going from fifty to forty in River Falls, it would seem. going from fifty to forty in River Falls, it would seem like you found money for them. But essentially, you've got the city councils of River Falls that've done this for twenty years, right? This is a two-decade march towards building up a comfortable nesting. But absolutely, if things change in the community and the council felt there was a priority or even in the sense of the fire station, you're, you find it inadequate to spend the six point one million or whatever on the fire station. There, you do have this as an option. I just think you should be cautious about doing that.
Does it matter in our rating? Like if, so say for instance, we, you know, when we do the CIP and things like that, I mean, we have a laundry list of things that we wanna do that never make it on because the money, the money is not there. I'm coming from school finance world where ten, the ten percent is the fun, like, you know, that's kind of the minimum they need to have because the concept is, is it's taxpayer money and we're not a bank. Like this is taxpayer funded dollars. So we should use that money to pay for things that taxpayers want. So if we were to, and then I have another question for you because I don't love finance. Um, I'm sorry, you do it. Is, if we were doing things that were again, like for the city or for things or projects that we've had on this list forever for like, you know, Riverwalk or something like that, does that make a difference to those rating agencies where like we've decided to do this because we wanna check off these things that have been sitting here for twenty years that we now can do because we have a little bit more? Does that make a difference?
I think it would make a difference. So if you, any spend you make, they're gonna want some kind of explanation about how this is either going to be an investment towards future revenue generation or it's going to reduce the future obligation for maintenance or deferred maintenance or something. So you could make some arguments on like Riverwalk that the pipes are old and you go from seventy-five year old pipes to zero year old pipes and now all of a sudden you got a better asset, you're in better shape. You have to just be careful about what you do, um, but with the argument about ten percent and it's the people's money, that's true.
I'm not saying we need to go to ten percent, that's school finance.
And ten percent, what we've seen before on the, for instance, places that reduce their fund balance to that low, then they have a serious cash management issue. Like if they wanna make payroll, they sometimes have to do short-term revenue anticipation notes, which makes no sense to me to borrow money to pay operating. But the, the major thing that's different between us, or I think is different between us and the school district as far as what kind of balance you wanna have is it's not uncommon for us to have to buy up to a million dollars in inventory with utility. So you, you all of a sudden have this expense. Now, we, it might now be a one million dollar invoice, although sometimes like transformers and things can get there in a hurry. If it was just general city stuff, like we needed plow blades and we needed trees and we needed salt and then the fifty percent is more just to feel really good about our fiscal strength. But when you do have the utility in play, there's just a different level of capital. I think our inventories right now are, are electric alone. Just in like cabling, we probably have close to a million dollars in cable. So it's, there's some challenges there with reducing, but I, we, I could not make a good policy recommendation against you deciding you wanna go a quarter percent. The council said that's really where they wanna add. We can't say all hell is gonna break loose. I can tell you that you have to be careful about doing it because the thing that they hate more than bad finance decisions is quick or change, you know, changes. They like to be able to see what you're doing and predict it over time.
Well, it was fifty until October of twenty one and that's when we went to the forty percent minimum, fifty percent target. So you already do kind of have this documented pretty recent history modification. So to do another one, so.
But a ten percent difference, sorry, you don't, um, but a ten percent, a goal versus the target, that's a lot of money. I mean, a ten percent difference on a yearly budget of twelve million dollars, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, the difference is that the red line to the green bar, the top of the green bar, so it's, it's, can be close to two million and as you see in that twenty, twenty six. So I see we're at six fif, I think, unless that's our time, it's six, six fifteen. So what we would need to know from the council is how many more workshops you want? Zero to whatever.
Did we get all the way through this or?
I don't think we got, did we get through every single slide?
No.
No, so, no, we're still not quite to that yet. You had good questions, so I think we could just bring back the presentation in the council meeting. Also, are we willing to do workshops? Do you? We could probably finish this workshop the next, in two Tuesdays, the council wants to do that. I don't think we have the workshops. First budget workshop, so we can bump the budget.
I think we gotta get this done before you budget.
Yeah, that would give you time. What we had planned is to do this workshop, give you time to come back with more feedback and then present a quick fiscal plan and later. So that would make some sense to me to get through. So, should we plan it for Tuesdays or do you wanna do specific?
I'll be late again. The second Tuesday of the month is just hard for me to work.
Well, this would be last Tuesday of the month, which this would be the fourth Tuesday.
Twenty six.
Twenty six. Right?
Oh, you're saying, I'm sorry, I thought you meant like two.
We can tell you like this so much that we would just come right back in two weeks.
Okay, that works for me.
We'll assume we can get staff and we'll have it all overnight. Be fine. That's what the council wants to do.
Yes.
Yeah, well, you were already planning to be here.
It sounds like we already figured out a way to pay for Riverwalk's law.
Yeah, so, are we adjourned, Merrick?
Sure. Okay, give it up, three seconds or?
Okay.
You got it.